Good evening. We'll call the Monday, May 16th, 2022, regular session of the Lake Jackson City Council meeting to order. And welcome to this evening. And we'll begin with Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Sinhane.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and liberate and just as a law.
Honor of Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the people of Texas, one state, one entity, indivisible.
And the invocation tonight will be given by Councilman Buell.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, again, we thank you for another wonderful day and another opportunity to meet here this evening. And Lord is our meeting progressive and decisions have to be made. Please give us the strength, courage, and wisdom to make the decision in the best interest of our city and that of our residents. Please be with our military men and women abroad and stateside and our first responders. And thank you, Lord, for giving me eight years on this council. I want to thank the citizens of Lake Jackson for believing in me, trusting in me, giving me eight years. It's been a very positive experience for me. I learned a lot. And again, thank you. Be with each and every one of us as we travel home. Get us home safely. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. All right. Next item is visitor comments. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to make comment on an item that is not on the consent or regular agenda? All right. We'll go forward with presentations. We have introduction of James Bryson.
If I get James to come up. James was welcomed today. This is his first day on the job. He is our new finance director to replace Ms. Eves, our outgoing finance director. James comes from a couple of cities, Hutto, Corpus Christi. I know I'm missing a couple.
Kingsville, yes, sir.
And then the private sector as well. He has a number of years of experience. And he also has, what caught our interest in the interview, he has interest in PIDs.
Yeah, Hutto had several PIDs before I left.
So James, do you want to tell anything about yourself?
Like you said, I'm from Corpus Christi area. I was in banking for about 12 years before I switched into government. I think I did 12 years for the city of Corpus, two in Kingsville, and almost five in Hutto. I'm glad to be here. Staff's been wonderful. And I've been on the books for like, since eight o'clock this morning. And they hit me, hit the ground running with the budget today. So we've been meeting with all the departments. But everybody's been wonderful. I'm very pleased to be here. So thank y'all for having me. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Okay. Next item for presentation is recognition of Pam Eves.
Ms. Eves, this is going to be Ms. Eves' last council meeting. Ms. Eves has been with us for 32 years as our finance director. So I'm slowly becoming the most tenured on staff. But once Sal leaves, I think I may be, there may be one other out there. But Pam's been with us for 32 years. And then actually, she probably longer served that because she was with our auditor firm, and she was our main auditor before that as well. So she's been connected with the city for quite some time. I appreciate, you know, she's asked for no fanfare, so we have no really big fanfare tonight. But we are going to have a breakfast with her in a couple of weeks when she officially retires. But for Pam, Pam has, if anybody knows, you know, Pam, or gets to work with Pam on a daily basis, she is fiercely loyal to the city. And she supports her staff, you know, through thick and thin. She wants the best for the city. And she's thorough to the point, and loyal to the point of being, you know, extremely argumentative because with everybody, because she wants the right, she wants us to do the right thing. And she wants that for every department.
Passionate.
Passionate is probably the better word. Some would say argumentative. But no.
Or something else, yes.
I will truly miss Pam and everything she's given to the city. She will be terribly missed.
Thank you. And I already told Mr. Appel, I've already poisoned James. Since he knows how I feel about kids. Thank you very much. I've enjoyed working here. I've worked with Mr. Mundo since he came here with Mr. Yenney. And we always had a great team. And I certainly appreciate the chance to voice my opinion. You win some, you lose some. But we always march forward on the same page. We voiced our opinion behind closed doors. And once we left there, whatever decision was made, we always marched together on the same page. I don't think you'll find a city that's been more conservative in their spending and more responsible with taxpayer money than this one. And I certainly appreciate my time here. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is Declaration of Conflict of Interest. And this is an opportunity for members of council to declare any conflict of interest they would have on any item on the consent or regular agenda. Is there any conflict to declare? All right, not hearing any. We'll move on to consent agenda. It's a long consent agenda, and I have to read it.
You have to read all of it.
Oh, man. Item one is accept board and commission minutes. Planners Commission and Traffic Commission. We have item two is set regular council meeting times for 6:30 p.m. on the first and third Monday of each month, except for the following meetings: Tuesday, July 5th, Tuesday, September 6th, Tuesday, January 17th of 2023, and Tuesday, February 21 of 2023. Item three is authorize city manager to execute a contract with restroom facilities, LTD, through Byboard Contract 532-19 for the replacement of the Pee Wee Field Pee Wee Restrooms and Concession Facilities and Dunbar Park Pavilion Restroom Facility in the amount not to exceed $860,270. That's a lot of money for restrooms. Item four is award bid number 22-04-004 to Houston Poly Bag for garbage bags with a fixed unit price of $8.12 per roll. Authorize city manager to execute contract with HR Green for wastewater treatment facility headworks design and engineering in the amount not to exceed $136,250. Authorize city manager to execute a contract with PGAL for design services associated with the above-ground storage, fuel storage tanks in the amount not to exceed of $132,233. And then item seven, which is designate the fax. That's the official newspaper of the city of Lake Jackson. Members of council, is there any item you'd like to remove from the consent agenda for further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a motion on the consent agenda.
Do you approve of the agenda's 137?
Second.
All right. Got a motion by Councilman Buell, second by Councilwoman Seth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? All right. Move on to regular agenda. We have item one, is a resolution declaring the results of the May 7th, 2022 general election. Sally.
Yes. Okay, so this is a resolution of the city of Lake Jackson, Texas, declaring the results of the May 7th, 2022 city election, that the city council officially finds and determines that the following votes were cast at said election for the position of mayor, position number two, and position number four. Mayor Gerald Rosnowski, 1,500. Position number two, Vanessa Hanya, 877. Travis Pate, 805. Position number four, Chase Blanchard, 1,092. Jesse Glatz, 464. And further, the city council officially finds and determines that the following votes were cast at said election for the sale of Parkland. For Proposition A, four was 1,311 against 356. And further, the city council officially finds and determines that the following votes were cast at said election for each of the proposed city charter amendments. Amendment A, four, we had 1,291 against 255. Amendment B, four, 985 against 670. Amendment C, four, 861 against 750. Amendment D, four, 749 against 854. Amendment E, four, 1,052 against 543. Amendment F, four, 1,600 and against 52. Amendment G, four, 878 and against 724.
All right. Thank you. Take a motion on this resolution. Somebody's got to make a motion.
Mayor, I make a resolution declaring the results of May 7th, 2022, in the general election.
Have a motion from Councilwoman Seth.
A second.
Second from Councilman Baker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? All right. Resolution is approved. Mr. Buell, if you want to meet me down in front.
Welcome to X-Town.
Yes, right there. All right. Got a couple of things for you. And I think this is, you are the first members of city council to ever serve on a city council, receive this. Okay. Bill Yenney received the first one of these. And so you're the first one. Okay, special. So this is a key to the city of Lake Jackson, Mr. Buell, for here's a service from May 14th to May 2022. And the first one, survey. All right, as a council.
Yes.
All right. Let's step around this way in front of it. Let's get this.
Yeah, go ahead and move it over.
All right. I just, I got a few others. Go ahead.
I'd like, I'd like to say that I agree. How are the ones you even said. We had our differences over eight years on council. And we got our job done. And everyone made a paper. And let that room up. I threw that door right there. And settled it. And we went on, got our job done. We didn't always disagree. We didn't always agree. But we settled in, we got the job done. And I think Lake Jackson is where it is today. From day one, you're not going, you're not going to agree all the time. It's work together for the whole, the residents of the city, and the city council. And that's, I'm very proud of that. I'm very proud. And the directors. And every time I had a problem, director, every time I had a problem, a question was asked to me about citizens, or whatever director, they took what I had to say. They got me an answer. And it wasn't no BS, no three or four days or weeks. And I very, very appreciate it. Made my job very easy. And the councilmen coming forward, don't hesitate that. Okay?
All right. Okay. Here we go. Nate Tad, and here's a nice lapel pin.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
For city council. All right. Thank you very much. Been a pleasure, man.
Right, I'm sure.
All right, guys. We're going to, next item is taking oath of office. So Renee and Chase are going to come up here. And Sally's going to give him a mine.
Do you want me to do yours first?
Let's let the mayor be official first. If he's not official, he can't swear at anybody else.
We'll do Renee. Yeah, because we'll do Renee and we'll do Chase. Renee goes on.
And we do Mayor Pro Tem. Mom and I don't get nothing.
Okay. Raise your right hand. Do that for me. Aye.
Aye. Gerald Rosnowski, who solemnly swear, and affirm, that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of mayor of the city of Lake Jackson and of state of Texas, and will to my best ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States of this state. So help me God.
This is my certificate of election.
Okay.
I can present that to you. This is me who certify that you have been duly elected as mayor.
All right. Must be in standup, people. How would you pick?
What are we doing?
It's in the way.
Thank you.
All right, there we go.
You want to call the same one?
Sure.
Raise your right hand.
The name and the by the authority of state of Texas, or the office. I, Vanessa Hanya, who solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of city council, position two, of the city of Lake Jackson, and of the state of Texas, and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States of this state. So help me God.
Congratulations. And here's your certificate. General election held on May 7th, 2022. Council position number two. Congratulations. Welcome back. All right. Good.
Thanks.
Let's see. Okay. Looking sharp.
Stand next to you.
Chase Blanchard, who solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of city council, position four, of the city of Lake Jackson and of the state of Texas, and will to my best and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of this state. So help me God. Congratulations. Anthony, okay, great. You go by Anthony? Let's go by Anthony. Okay, that's great. So this is your certificate. This is from state of Texas to certify of your general election held on May 7th, 2022. Newly elected position, congratulations. Swatting board. Appreciate it. There we go. There you go. Look at the ladies. Look at him. Get used to this.
Right, let's get one of this.
Yep.
There you go.
You're going to go to, you're going to sit in position four, which is all of ourselves. Okay. You can take a picture at your seat if you want to.
It used to be even and odd, but it used to be odd on this side, even on this side.
Smile.
Okay.
Chase.
Yep. Okay. All right. Well, congratulations. And we'll move forward with the agenda. And next item we have on the agenda is, let's see, item four. And this is appoint mayor pro temp. I have this responsibility to lead this piece of it. And this is by charter. The mayor pro temp is selected and appointed by the city council as a whole. And the way this has been done in the past, is a procedure that we've used in the past, is that it's always the person that has served the longest on city council, but has not been mayor pro temp. And so that would be Rhonda Seth. And one thing that, I already talked to Rhonda a little bit about this, was is that in the recent years, we've talked a little bit about this process. And one of the challenges that we have on the way that the procedure works is, is that we have, sometimes we have unique situations, like for example, when Buster first came on council. And even whenever Matt came on the council, was they came in on their first term, and they came to their first council meeting, next thing I knew, they were mayor pro temp.
I was the same way.
And yeah, and JB was the same way. And so what I would propose is, and again, this is just procedural, because this isn't, even the process that we use is not in, in the charter. But procedurally, what I would suggest is that as we go forward, is, is that we just add a line to that procedure, and just saying that a person needs to have served at least one year on council. So that way allows them to get their foot in, you know, feet on the ground and stuff before they have to step in and fill, fill in for a mayor if needed. So that's, again, it's no action that we need to take. That's just something I wanted to state tonight. So again, it's up to, tonight, if you want to follow the same procedures we've used in the past, as far as, again, longest served, that not, has not served as mayor pro temp, I will take a motion on a name.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we select Councilman Member Seth as mayor pro temp.
Okay, we have a motion. We need a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All right. Let me mark this down. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? All right. Come on over.
All right. Got to remove.
Got to move.
And Matt move over here.
Okay.
Yeah, once we started moving the mayor pro temp to the seat next to the mayor, just so happened that Councilman Broadus' position became the floater.
He's going around.
So he bounces around.
It made it easy that he's not here tonight.
Yeah, that's right. Having to pick up all this stuff. All right. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. We're going to move on now to.
TV more.
Yeah. We're going to move on to item five, which is a public hearing for the creation of Northwood Estates, Section Four, Public Improvement District, Modesto.
Yeah, this is, Milford's ahead of me. No, that's good. So tonight, we have a public hearing for creating a public improvement district for Northwood Phase Four. And Milford's pulled up a map where you could see there where it's located. The first three phases, Northwood Phases One, Two, and Three, are what you see on the ground. This fourth phase, the developer has petitioned to staff proposing a public improvement district to pay for capital improvements that are not, were not normal in the first three phases. And those are, one, raising now this, this development two feet out of the flood zone. That was not required, you know, in the first three phases, because we've had FEMA map changes. And the second item is also for a lift station that would serve this area. And then it would take that waste underneath a highway and connect to our piping, our, where we have capacity on the airport, on the airport side. Those are the two items that the developers asked for approving a public improvement district on there. What that means is, in essence, that the public improvement district sets a annuity rate, or a tax rate, that the new homeowner would have to pay in addition to the tax rate. But it's only for those two items plus interest. And it's not in the lot, it's not in the lot cost, but it's, it's in a, it's a special tax rate. But we're only asking those residents, that those 108 homes that are expected to be built there versus it being into part of the tax rate or anything, you know, anything else. Because we always require the developer to pick up the infrastructure costs. The normal infrastructure items that are, will be part of the lot cost are still streets, other water and sewer. It's just really these two items.
Okay. Red, do you have anything to say?
I think really, we've truthfully covered it. I mean, I'm ready to answer questions. But I think your idea is.
Any questions from council real quick before we ask the audience?
No questions, just some clarification points on here. Because we've gone over this pretty, pretty in detail. So you've developed, you put, you invest into these, this project. And if you don't sell the homes, then that cost is yours at this point. And there is no, no cost to any taxpayer at that point, if the homes are unsold.
Remember when we were talking about the bridge?
Sure.
It's almost like that.
Yeah.
They built the bridge and no one bought houses.
And this is just clarification, final thing. And nobody, no taxpayer, other than those that are actually purchasing one of the homes, will bear any of the costs, not administrative, not in any way for these, this project, correct?
Correct.
So I.
Okay.
Good.
There is one page that I'd like to highlight, though. Page 48. Milford, if you could go to that. Because when we get to the resolution, we talk about the cost, the specific cost for the PID. And page 48 really gives the breakdown of the cost. And so we, the 2.7, you know, almost 2.8 million is for the improvements. Then there's a financing cost component. And so you show the total improvements. And then there's PID administration, which they have to, everybody has to pay for a firm to keep track of the payments that these homes are being paid, that, you know, the homeowner's paying individually, because some will pay them off early. I mean, the homes turn over all the time. A new homeowner wants to come in, say, how much do I have to owe on the PID? That's paid for a PID administration company that handles that. And then this, we also, the city asks for 1% to cover our cost, because we have to look at the, the books and make payment as well. So we may have some small, minor cost each year. So that's, that's the projected 30-year cost for that PID.
Okay.
Reggie, for clarification, we're going to put, are you going to put a pump in there? And where would the water be pumped into? And they were saying, maybe you can clarify. He was, okay, sure, okay.
Lift station.
Okay.
And put a lift station.
The lift station is.
Okay, you were saying something about going back over to the other side. Okay.
The current lift station in front doesn't have that. So we have to add the lift station. And now we have to take it across the highway.
Got you, got you.
Which, which is neat. That does make sort of a genuine deal like that.
One more clarification, just to, just to make sure that we talked about this before, that the collection of this PID would be done by the tax office, and the city would never be in the position to have to collect on this.
Correct.
Right.
It's collected by the tax office and administered by Hall City. And Hall Hill is the, they're the PID administrator. And they, like the doctor said, if anybody wants to pay off early, they deal with them. They deal with the, the, that part of it.
Talk about, talk about the non-payment. So you know, if somebody doesn't want to pay, then it's not city's concern. That would be taken care of.
The county's issue, and then it becomes, you know, once it goes past the lien, then it's lien issues through the county.
Right. Before we go much further, I did not officially open the meeting. So I'm going to open the meeting as of 6:54 in public hearing. Okay, we can go further now. Okay, any other questions, council?
One other question, if you can clarify, I think we did talk about it, but what if one of the homes go into foreclosure, then how would the money be collected?
It's the same as any other tax debt, uh, the foreclosed tax debt, they would owe, uh, the, the, the same issues, the way Brentford College would be out, out the money. So however foreclosure goes.
So, so who would be out of the money?
Right, so...
You had to, I'm sorry, you had to come up the front and introduce yourself for record.
Scott Dean and Paul Hill and Associates, we create and administer PIDs. So, in, in a foreclosure, once the foreclosure happens and the subsequent buyer has to come current on taxes, it would be the same thing with the PID assessment, if there were two years of arrears on the annual payments on the PID assessment, those would have to be, fixed at the time of signing.
Okay.
And then it would come current and just keep paying every year.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, any questions from the audience? All right, one last chance to council?
Yeah, uh, I'm gonna play catch-up, sorry. Um, I see we've put it in there for the stormwater drainage and all of that. Um, we were talking about elevating what you're gonna build here. So we did have that issue with all the rainwater, that's all mitigated with, we're not gonna make a big bowl, right?
No, no.
We're...
Yeah, the...
We can't get in and out of the houses?
Yeah, when we, when we complete, do you have a map of the, the whole Northwood? That was, that was a big part of...
Right.
Actually getting the approval to get PID, because we're, we're finally going to complete the lake. When Northwood started, we had Phase One, Two, Three, and the lake. Well, the lake, we never finished, because we got to this point in 2008 yet, so we never finished the lake. Well, it's causing a problem, is the river floods were coming without the lake being finished, the elevation's too low, so it was flooding into the lake, flooding the lake, causing the, the street problems that, that you had.
Yes.
You had like five, four times. Now, the, the whole property, because of the new flood zone, is gonna be built up two foot, maybe even a little more, which, which creates, means we're not going to now get water in the lake, so we're really solving the problems for Phase One, Phase Two, and Three, along with being able to do things.
Awesome. Thank you for catching me up.
That was a big key to getting it done, was helping the problem that's there now. It's all the problem with Northwood. I mean, everybody, you know, Northwood just does like crazy, but still, every time it's like, didn't those streets flood? Yeah, well, luckily no houses, you know, streets.
Awesome.
Thank you.
You bet.
Anything else, Chase?
That's all I got, thank you.
Okay, all right. All right, uh, we'll go ahead and close the, uh, public hearing at, what time is it? 7:03? And we'll move on to item six, which is the resolution.
Uh, let's see here. This is Resolution 894. A resolution making findings in connection with the proposed Northwood Estates, Section Four, Public Improvement District, related to the advisability of the improvements, the nature of the improvements, the estimated cost of the improvements, the boundaries of the proposed district, the method of assessment, and the apportionment of cost between the district and the city as a whole, and making other findings related to the district.
Okay, take a motion on this resolution.
Move for approval.
A motion. Need a second?
Second.
I have a second. And discussion on the resolution, final. Again, there's a lot of detail down in the bottom of it, uh, we talked to, Modesto talked about it just a little bit, but if you have any questions, uh, before we make a final decision? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, resolution carries.
Nope, don't leave yet.
Don't leave yet.
You got one more?
Yeah, sir. Item seven, resolution authorizing establishment of Northwood, uh, East, easement, uh, Estates, Section Four, Public Improvement District, in the city of Lake Jackson, Modesto.
Uh, Resolution Number 893, a resolution authorizing the establishment of the Northwood Estates, Section Four, Public Improvement District, in the city of Lake Jackson, Texas, authorizing publication of this resolution, providing for the preparation of a service and assessment plan, and making other provisions related to the subject.
All right, any a motion on this resolution?
Make a motion for approval.
A motion?
Second.
Have a motion, second. Okay, any discussion on this resolution? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, resolution, okay, you're done.
Thank you, and Chase, welcome, and I tell you, Buster was, was a very good old year, wasn't he? He was wonderful, hate seeing him go, but welcome you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna move on to, tonight's the night of public hearings. Item eight, public hearing to amend Chapter 110 zoning to the Code of Ordinances to allow mobile food vendor courts as a permitted use in B1, that's neighborhood businesses, B2, central businesses, and C1, commercial zones. The public hearing opens at 7:05.
Mayor and councils, so as requested by the city council, we took the concept of food truck courts to the planning commission, so that they could discuss what zones it should be allowed in. They also discussed parking regulations, which sort of go hand in hand. So on their recommendation, as well as what council discussed previously, uh, staff feels comfortable bringing forward B1, B2, and C1 for zones. Uh, part of that would also be the parking requirement. We are recommending, as well with the planning commission, three parking spaces minimum. Those are not designated for customers or employees, it is just three per truck. Um, so I hope that makes sense. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to elaborate.
Okay.
And this is not, sorry, this is, uh, no other guidelines would be approved tonight, it's just the zone and the parking. So we'll bring back the guidelines at a future meeting.
Yep, the guidelines will come back to council, uh, to discuss and define, uh, with some input, probably at the end of the day with, uh, planning for some input, but mostly it'll be council making those guidelines up, with staff help. So, uh, any questions on this, council? Again, all we're doing is, uh, designating what would be permitted as far as, uh, zoning areas.
And restaurants, uh, really their thought process, these are the same zones where a restaurant is allowed.
Okay.
If we do designate parking spaces, do we get into an issue where we have to start designating ADA parking spaces also, if we do that?
That's set forward by other entities, not us, so we would not have to do that. Yeah, once would they say three, they just have to meet that, and then everything else is determined based on how many parking spaces they have with that, but that wouldn't be us.
Okay, any other questions? All right, from the audience, any questions concerning food courts? Food truck courts, all right. Okay, we're going to close the pub, public hearing at 7:08. And... Okay, that's all we have, we had no action on that.
We do, uh, Mayor, the next one, item nine.
Oh, that's right, item nine, okay. Item nine is an ordinance, uh, to amend Chapter 110 zoning to the Code of Ordinances to allow mobile food vendor courts as permitted use in B1, B2, and C1, first reading.
Uh, this is ordinance number 22-2249, an ordinance amending Chapter 110 zoning of the code of Lake Jackson, Code of Ordinances to allow mobile food service vendor courts as permitted uses in B1, neighborhood business, B2, central business, and C1, commercial zones. Adding definitions, providing for parking, providing that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith shall be repealed to the extent of the conflict only, providing for a penalty, and providing a savings clause.
All right, take a motion on this item?
Move for approval.
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Baker.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Seth. Any other discussion? Again, another opportunity, any discussion from, uh, the audience? Hearing none, I'll take a vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right. First reading, so it'll be back, uh, next council meeting. Just for a second. Item ten, public hearing amending Chapter 110 zoning to the Code of Ordinances to decrease setback for accessory, assesses, anyway, say that word for me, assesses.
Accessory.
Accessor, yeah, we'll say that, okay, accessory, yeah. Because I always try to use a different one, all right. Uh, structures on residual, uh, residential lots that back up to parks and drainage ways, Modesto, and we'll open the public hearing at 7:10.
Thank you, Mayor. This came about where we had a citizen actually, uh, bring up the idea of, they wanted to build an accessory structure in their buildable, uh, outside of their buildable area, and they were really restricted by the, um, I guess, the rear setback line, which is at 15 feet. Mostly, that's, usually it is what it is on almost all our zones, except for probably the estate zone, that may be 25 feet, but most are 15 feet. And the question was, this property owner had, uh, was backed up to a park. And usually you think of the rear setback line, you know, uh, line as, because you're protecting from home to home, and so it was a legitimate question of, do we need that large of a rear setback, you know, line, you know, for, um, accessory structure when it backs up, you know, to open space? And so that, uh, council was open to, you know, that concept, and we, uh, sent it, um, to the planning commission, and they agreed. But staff's recommendation, we tightened it up a little bit, because when we first opened the discussion, we talked about all waterways. And staff's recommendation to planning commission, and again, the planning commission agreed, is what, is that, our recommendation is that you could allow accessory structures over 200 feet, you know, up to any easement, when it backs up park property and/or a drainage way, meaning a drainage ditch. We took off the table from our recommendation, when it backs up to like a drainage pond, like Shy Pond, um, and/or, um, Oyster Creek. And the main reason for that, uh, one, on the drainage pond, on drainage ponds, we, you have a lot of erosion problems. And so the worry is, okay, you get too close to that, then we're, we're worried about the erosion. You do have that on some ditches, but we have a little more control on that, on slope pavement. And the other one on Oyster Creek, there are so many dang lines, uh, that are, you know, that overlay it from flood administration, from FEMA, that, uh, we didn't want to get into that as well. It would, it would get confusing of when to tell a citizen, when, outside, you know, there, uh, if we had a different setback line of, well, you can go to here, because it's the high bank, or where FEMA says it can go, because it's in the floodway, we wanted to keep it as simple as possible and not, you know, make it more complicated. So we kind of narrowed it to parks and drainage ways. And so the recommendation, again, was for those two areas, and then it could go for an accessory structure over 200 feet, it could go back to, if there was an easement line, or minimum punt, if there wasn't one, five feet, uh, from the property line. It'd still keep it away from the fence line a little bit, um, but it, um, but most likely there's always, there's usually, everything we were talking about, we think there's a utility easement, you know, most, most likely in, in most people's backyards, so it can go up to that.
Okay. And again, uh, when we talked about, the last time we talked with, uh, planners, is they started asking questions about, you know, because again, this was, this individual was, he was gonna build larger than 200 square feet, he was gonna be over 300 something square feet for his, uh, additional building. And so he, uh, so the question was, is, you know, what are the restrictions on how big you can build? And we do already have an ordinance in place that, that defines, is it 35%? Yeah?
Yeah, it's 35% of lots, especially in R2, so he would still be constricted to that, uh, that there's only so much buildings you can put on a residential lot. And so in this instance, R2 is 35%.
But with this, he would be able to move it back into that setback.
Move it back further. What we didn't want to do, we, when we, when we, again, when we first discussed it, we talked about just moving the setback line, making it different, but when you do that, that opens up the possibility of everything can move back, the home, the garage, and nobody really agreed that that was the best notion. We wanted to keep it to accessory structure.
All right. Yep.
Has anybody, but just by any chance, anybody, I don't remember this gentleman's name that was here, has anybody contacted him to let him know?
Uh, no, I don't think we, we have. I mean, I can combat, make combat to, contact back to him, but his, the reason why I haven't contacted him is because his intentions were, if we couldn't address it quickly, he was gonna just move ahead. So I'm sure he's already moved it, because he was, he was dealing with the cost of concrete going up, he wanted to go ahead and, and, uh, do it, so he wasn't gonna wait for us. And he did have the option of going to ZBA if he wanted to, and he didn't choose to do that, so... But I will reach out to him following this meeting, uh, I'll go back to my records and reach and contact him and tell him this is, you know, what we decided tonight, if we decide anything. Anything else from council? Audience, any comment? All right, we'll close the public hearing at, close the public hearing at 7:15, and we'll move on to item 11 for the ordinance, first reading.
This is ordinance number 22-2248, an ordinance amending Chapter 110 zoning of the city of Lake Jackson Code of Ordinances to decrease accessory structure setbacks for residential lots that border parks or drainage ways, providing that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith shall be repealed to the extent of the conflict only, providing for a penalty, and providing a savings clause.
All right, take a motion on this item?
Make a, Mayor, I'll make a motion for approval.
Okay, a motion from Councilwoman Seth, and a second from Councilman Sanjanya. Any other comments, questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. As first reading, and again, that will be coming back to council, uh, next meeting. All right, we move on to item 12, discuss guidelines for private canopies over downtown city property, and this is, Megan's gonna talk to us about this.
Yes, so as you may be aware, North Parking Place, the removal of the canopies is complete, and we're just finishing the final buttoning up stages and fixing any buildings that may have gotten a little bit of damage during the removal process. So, staff would now like to request on all of the businesses' behalf, that council gives us permission to move forward with allowing them to put a canopy back up in place of the ones we removed, or if it's a business in downtown that doesn't currently have a canopy and they want to put one up, um, because they are over city property, we do have to go through this process where you give us permission, they have to sign, um, an encroachment agreement, they have to get approval from Mr. Mundo, so, and then they also have to fall within all the other code and ordinances as dictated for a canopy, so, separate from them being in downtown, they already have different, um, rules they have to follow. Those are being, they have to be windstorm compliant, uh, they have a height requirement, I believe it's seven and a half feet of clearance when you're walking in, um, and then, like I said, for downtown businesses, there's an encroachment agreement. So, we would like to ask, we have had one business, um, already request this, uh, they are ready to move forward, so that is why it's coming to you now. But we hope that all of them are interested in doing something with their facade if, now that we've removed these canopies, so that is what we're requesting.
And, and again, the, the reason why it's coming to us, uh, is that the way it currently set up is, is that each individual business would have to come to council and, and request, make the request. And so what we're trying to do here is provide some guidelines, and hopefully have it set up to where any, are we gonna define this for just downtown? Yes.
Yes.
That's because of the property and stuff, so it would be, we would define guidelines, so then, once we define the guidelines and put them in place, well then, uh, each business can make a request to Modesto, and then he could use those guidelines to, uh, either agree or not agree. And then, then the business could still come to council if they wish.
So if they don't put anything, then it's just gonna stay like it is?
Yes, sir. Yes, the green steel material that you see where the canopy was, all of the businesses are aware that that is supposed to be a temporary buttoning up. Um, it is weatherproof, windproof, certified, all of that, but it's not meant to be permanent, so they are aware of that. So something should be happening to storefronts regardless, but they could choose to leave up that green piece of steel if they wanted to. So theoretically, everyone would do something to the front of their buildings, but I, I don't know if that will happen.
So if it's not permanent, then what's gonna happen? I mean, we can't mandate them to do anything, so they just...
No, their building, it's their building.
But we have left it weather tight, looking as nice as we can for a reasonable cost, so, yes, they had the option for us to put a canopy back in place of the one we removed, and, um, a majority voted no, so we did not move forward with that.
Again, what we're leaving there is something that can last for a, a long period of time, if they choose to leave it that way. Again, what we're leaving there is something that can last for a long period of time, if they choose to leave it that way. If they just want to put a sign on top of it or whatever type of stuff.
Yeah, I think, you know, the, but, most have expressed that, you know, that they want to maintain their own individualness, you know, or option versus making it look like a possible shopping center. So we, we agree with that. And the canopy thing, this is no different than Smith Arts. When we took the canopy down in the front of Smith Arts, Ms. Bruce put up some metal, metal canopies. Our requirement then was that.
Encroachment agreement, meaning that.
And all that means really is that it has to be attached to the building, and that if we ever have to do work to the public sidewalk and we need access and it has to come down, then the canopy has to come down at their cost. But hopefully, we wouldn't, you know, it's set up high enough and we wouldn't have to do that. But that's, in essence, that's what the encroachment agreement is. If we have to get in there and bust up the pavement and change it out and stuff, and the canopy's in the way, then they would have to take it down and get it out of our way at their cost.
What about not encroaching any sidewalks, no, you know, nothing on sidewalk as support?
And that's part of, that's part of the guideline, nothing can, no footings, no.
It has to be attached to their storefront, to their building.
We're going to, you know, as, as we take canopies down and we allow a new one, no more footing, so we don't have to deal with this, you know, forty years later of having to disrupt the business.
And again, just for general information for the public is, is that downtown is unique. And the unique being is, is that the city owns just about all the property downtown. We own up to the slab of all the buildings that are there. So this is why it's unique, and that's why we would have these guidelines in place.
So hopefully, if you approve this, it'll just kind of streamline the process for the business that it doesn't have to be scheduled for a council meeting, and we can go ahead and approve those.
So are you going to come back with an official document, or?
I'll come back with the resolution.
Okay.
I just need a list of guidelines.
And did we go through the list of guidelines?
Staff is just recommending that we maintain the same guidelines that are already in the code of ordinance. There's three listed out, so it has to do with being windstorm compliant, the height of it, as well as the, the encroachment agreement. So that's already in your, your ordinance. So that would just be what we would recommend, nothing more, nothing less.
Okay, so that, that's for signs, but so you, what you want to say is, the canopies will have the same as, as the sign ordinance. Also, I would like that they will indemnify us if it falls on somebody's head.
Okay.
And I don't know if you all want a certain material or anything, but windstorm's got to take care of whether it's sturdy or not.
But they want uniqueness, so if we did, they're them take away, takes away the uniqueness, so we don't want to do that.
Just as long as it, you know.
The, you know, in reality, I mean, the wind, the windstorm compliance, which anybody who puts up a canopy in our area has to conform with the windstorm, that is usually going to set, you know, what can be done because of affordability. If someone wanted to put a twenty-foot canopy out there, they'd have to pay an outrageous, you know, portion to, to comply with windstorm. So usually that's what's going to keep it in check.
Okay. Uh, any comments? Smokey, you're here, you want to? Yeah, I'm sorry, you have to come up front and give address and name of all your kids and everything.
Did, did Smith Arts pay for their canopy, or did City pay for?
We did not pay for it. We paid for the, we paid for the removal and the asbestos, like we did on this one.
Okay. The building next to us, does that have been windstorm certified, one oh seven?
Zoom House.
Uh, it will have to be when it's done, but right now.
They, they started without a windstorm certificate?
There's nothing on the front.
There's not.
Do they have a permit?
They do have a permit for the construction, but they.
They have a permit when they built it originally a year ago.
Oh, I don't know, I'm assuming so.
David, can you speak to that?
As far as, as the one oh seven parking way goes, at the time that they started construction, they had a permit, however, the original owner, the owner at that time exceeded this book of that permit when we extended that building to the current height. We have gotten the windstorm report for that, the, that was done by. Why is that name escaping me? Another gentleman downtown. Anyways, yeah, thank you. So we do have the windstorm report for that, however, no construction has happened on that recently. The owners have changed to an, are aware of that and have been in conversations with them. But we do have a report for, for the windstorm stability of that.
Okay. Smokey, I need you to give us your name and address, your address.
For the record.
For the record.
For the business?
Not for your resident.
Oh, one oh four Pocken.
Okay, alright, I got you for the record. Yeah.
I, I was talking to the canopy company that installs canopies, and they were saying that some cities in Texas City and other areas around Houston area, where they have gone in and inconvenienced the business owner with the construction, they have, when it, they have agreed to go in and pay for half the canopy. I'm not requesting that, but during the first meeting that we had, we were told, it was quite a few business owners here at that meeting, that y'all were going to bend over backwards to help us because we're being inconvenienced, y'all are going to help us. I just didn't know what that means. Help, what does that, maybe help with the, with the windstorm, or the permitting, or the costs, I don't know. But I left that meeting with a good feeling that we were going to be a partner and that y'all were going to help us. So I guess I'm here to ask what kind of help.
So I, I, so I'll explain that, because I led that meeting. When we met with the individual owners, what, what was intended and what was said was that we were going to take the canopy down, and at the base cost was going to be, we were going to put back hardy blank, and it was going to be paid a neutral color. But we were also exploring if we could afford putting back some type of canopy structure on that. Once we got into discussion with the majority of the owners and the majority, and, and now, and the ownership has changed, where one majority, one owner owns the majority of the property, they did not want a canopy on the structure. So when that happened, we, we decided to ax any idea of putting a canopy anywhere on the structure because the major property owner owns at least three-quarters of the property, did not want a canopy. So that project in itself was, was, was killed and stuff. But the original intent was to see first a basic level, and then see if we could afford to do something of coming back with, with a canopy. But we stopped it.
Yeah, and maybe, you know, I, you know, a way to, one way to look at it is, like a, maybe not look at how much property he owned, but that he's one owner, and we're one owner, and then another one owner, you know, maybe he only should have had one vote positive. Of course, you took how many square, how many square footage and divided it by that number, but. I guess, the question I have is, you know, what kind of help we're going to get, if any? And then also, whenever they, in nineteen fifty-nine, when they put these up, the city council and the business owner must have been really tight, because they let the business owners put a porch because of the sun, the rain, the weather, and the shade. And then now we're getting the horse, so, so to speak. And I was wondering, you know, maybe y'all could help us out a little bit on, the canopy's going to be six thousand dollars, my call. And then if we want to change our windows and doors, it's going to be more, you know. So, we're having water come in and the sun, they're having to put signs up and windows. And other than that, I just, I want to put a canopy up to protect the, the front of the building.
You know, the canopy, I mean, when we talked to the engineers, the canopy had to come down. It was really the only way that we could truly clean up their area and make it ADA compliant, because it's all public property. And, you know, with the canopy staying there, and it was still, it was proving dangerous because a section fell, fell down. So, it needed, I mean, for that reason, you know, that reason alone, and then the ADA compliance, it would have been hard to work with trying to maintain the canopy. We did try that at Smith Arts and all, and also True to Life Ministry, where we tried to maintain the canopy, and then we got in there, it wasn't, it wasn't lasting through construction. So, we used this one as a, I mean, we used those two lessons of learning that it just was impossible to save, you know, the canopy.
And the canopies, when you say canopy, that's pretty generic, now it's down to, you want this thread that's this much more money, ten percent? Or you want a regular thread that won't?
So if our original intent was to help in some way with the cost of the canopy, and we have one property owner who owns the majority of it, is there still an, an opportunity to help those that don't fall on, you know, that would still, that agreed to it all because they thought that they would get some help? I mean, honestly, that seems like we would be doing the right thing for them at a much less cost to the city because that one majority property owner.
So staff tends to agree?
It's in the verb body.
Yeah, staff does tend to agree. We've talked, management staff has spoken, and we'll, we'll be bringing back, so we don't have money in the current budget that was set aside for this portion, the canopy removal. But staff is going to be bringing, when we talk about COVID money, we think that something to do with facade improvement for the entire city, money could be used for something like that very easily, a lot of other cities are doing it. So it is one option that council, or that staff is going to be bringing to council. So you can put that in the back of your mind, obviously, we're not discussing that tonight. But that is one avenue that staff has looked at, and I've spoken to Smokey about that as well. So, if you were wanting to do something, like I said, we don't have it in the budget right now because we didn't budget for adding the canopies back in, but that is one avenue. I think it's the only one that staff has looked at so far, so.
Can we do something as far, are you having to pay a permit fee?
Yeah.
Can we, I mean, can we look at waiving that for them?
Okay. I'm going to stop you, we're, we're getting way far away from the, from the agenda. And, no, it's fine, I let it go, I let it go, and now I'm thinking, we, we need to make it an, an item and bring it back.
Well, we need to, again, and, and again, what we were discussing was the guidelines for the canopies. And if, if the request is beyond what the guidelines were setting, then it needs to come back to council as a different request.
Yes.
Okay, so I guess I have to get my question answered at a later time.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's just, we have to stick to the agenda, or these guys get arrested, it's just.
I wanted to put the question out there, and then I don't mind getting answers later. So, I appreciate anything y'all do. We're just trying to make the, the building look nice and keep our tenant happy with not having to go out and mop up rainwater and. And we are planning on possibly changing out the, the windows and doors, so that'll help with the, the rain. But we can't do anything for, I think, January, because I don't want to start doing anything until they finish. I just want to get the ball rolling and get, get ahead of the game and, and be ready whenever they finish, we slap it on, we're good to go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. So you got enough guidance on the guidelines to bring back?
For an ordinance.
For an ordinance.
Resolution.
Resolution, I'm sorry.
Okay, move on to set interview dates for boards and commissions applicants. So, it's got your name beside it, Sally.
Yes, sir, so this is so we can set the date for our applicants, the new people who have applied. Generally, would they come in at five or five-thirty, and council will interview them? And then I think y'all close in to an executive session maybe to discuss.
Yeah, there's only a few that we can talk in executive, executive session, and most of them have to be in open.
In open, okay, so you have, so we're just trying to set that date and time. There's a couple of recommended dates, we can do it the next one, the next June sixth, or the following meeting, whatever works for y'all.
And we've been advertising?
Yes, yes, we have stuff out on social media, Laura Marie has put stuff out for us and.
Are we getting overwhelmingly, overwhelming responses?
Not overwhelming, but we did get a, we did get a couple today. We have probably about seven new applicants, but we still, we've extended that deadline until the twenty-fifth for new applicants. So she put it back out again today, and hopefully we'll get some more.
From the pic channel and also on the website.
Okay.
And Facebook too, right?
So the question is on Monday sixth, if people on your calendars, if you can come in early to do interviews on the sixth.
I won't be here on the sixth.
Okay. How about the twentieth?
I'll be on the twentieth, I'll be on the sixth, I'll be Aloha Ho.
Ohio.
Aloha Ho.
Aloha. Okay, where, what about the twentieth, are you available?
Yeah, I'll be available on the twentieth.
Okay, how about anybody else? Twentieth's good?
I'm opposite, but I'm here on the sixth and not the twentieth.
Oh, okay.
What about Mr. Councilman Broaddus, is he going to be out?
Alright.
I know he had mentioned two meetings that he might be out.
This is the second meeting.
This is the second meeting.
This is the second one?
The odds are we're probably going to have to do two anyway, because I'm, I'm guessing we're going to have, we're not going to get, I don't know. We struggle with getting numbers of people to, to fill positions, so.
Yeah, June the fifth will be my birthday, and I'll be on the Christmas.
It's okay, you're not going to be here.
Alright.
It's my birthday, it's my birthday.
Okay.
You're supposed to do the beep, bro.
Would it terribly upset you if you weren't involved with the interviews?
No, sir, no, sir.
Okay, well, let's get, the same for the sixth then.
The sixth, the next meeting?
I have done plenty of.
Plenty of, yes. Okay, so we'll give it a shot on the sixth.
Okay.
Alright, we're going to authorize, item fourteen, authorize city manager to execute a contract with Verner Materials for staging recycling material in an amount not to exceed a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, but that's the.
Yes, they have given us a, a rough contract, Ms. Russell has looked it over. I've broken out just the parameters of it. Five thousand dollars a month to rent the facility where we would stage our recyclables, and then six hundred dollars to transport either to the MRF, which is south Houston, or FCC, which is six hundred and fifty dollars north of Houston. We're still trying to work out which MRF that we're going to do. The FCC is a little bit cheaper with a rebate, but with the increased delivery, I'm contemplating if we just take it to Waste Management in case we have to, if we lose part of our agreement with Verner and we have to take it up ourselves, we may want to drive to the closer MRF. So, right now, we're going to try to eat this cost in the, in the budget. But long term, coming October one, we will have to increase the rate for recycling anywhere from a dollar to a dollar fifty per month. But I was hesitant on giving you a final rate recommendation yet, because we're going through the budget process and we have to, besides just this cost differential of now having to stage it and take it to the MRF in Houston, we still have to look at personnel cost for all of sanitation operations, fuel and other operational cost items. So, we weren't, it was a little premature for us to come up with a rate recommendation tonight for recycling. But I'm just giving you, just a heads up, it, it's probably going to be somewhere around a dollar, a dollar fifty a month rate, rate increase for recycling only.
So, what we, if we would approve the authorization tonight, it's basically going to carry us through October, because you're going to, you said you're going to find the funding in current budget. And then we would discuss it in our budget process on what to go, going for, do for.
That's correct, correct.
Because there's, is there sixty days, is it both ways on the contract?
Yes.
Okay, so we have sixty days if you want to end the contract or?
Yeah, I mean, it's a year contract, but in essence, they can give us a sixty-day notice to terminate. And so long term, what our recommendation, again, coming from the consultant, is, and what you've seen, I guess. I guess in our Capitol discussion, you know, last week, was that long term, we're recommending building our own staging facility and not, uh, uh, rent from, uh, Werner. But Werner was gracious enough to try to agree, you know, to help us.
Give us some breathing?
In the breathing room in short term, because we couldn't build a facility in, in a year or, or two.
Do any other cities, and I'm just asking, I don't know. Do any other cities just charge the residents who choose to participate in it?
No.
No.
Um, there are a lot of cities that have their rate mixed. So garbage and recycling is one rate. Um, but I've not seen, seen any city that just charges for participation, uh, on that. I'm not saying that, we sure haven't found one in the HJAC region. There probably is someone in the state of Texas that does it, but I haven't seen one in the HJAC region. But we could try to, to find out.
Just curiosity, because if you, I mean, I know when we started, the majority wants.
But again, you have to remember is, is that regardless you have a re, and I understand. And it just, and I guess this is purpose of audience also is that you've got the waste regardless if you do recycle or not. And we already know that our overall cost, be it just to landfill, what we normally landfill, uh, is going to increase. And that if we would not have recycle is that, that products were going to have to go to landfill also. So it's not like you're gonna recover the whole, uh, dollar amount that, uh, uh, recycle is costing.
Right.
Yeah, I would say off the back, back of the napkin, if we stopped recycling, then you would see that rate. You'd probably maybe could save half of it, uh, and stuff. Because now you still have to pick up that same amount.
But we wouldn't be looking to try to build a facility or do any of these types of things. Is that correct?
No, uh, no, you, you probably wouldn't look at a four dollar increase, but you would, uh, the three wouldn't go away.
Right.
You'd maybe a dollar, maybe, maybe a dollar fifty. You pay for more garbage and then those, those gentlemen would then go to the route, you know, those truck. You could get maybe long term, you could get rid of the trucks. Um, but you'd, you'd, that manpower would have to be increased on the garb, on the garbage side and stuff. So, um, yeah, there would be some, I just didn't want to give the mistaken notion that, that would completely go away. Uh, it's like, it, it just flips. It's gotta go to the landfill and now you've got to pick it up and take it to the landfill. And there's a, there's a cost component to that also.
How, how about just, uh, instead of picking up recycle every week, maybe you pick up every other week? I mean.
Just looking, yeah, looking for some solutions because like, for example, families who don't currently recycle. I mean, we're already, I mean.
Yeah, if we picked it up every other week, we would have to, we would, we would have to add trucks, uh, because we couldn't, uh.
Couldn't physically pick up.
We can't physically pick it up. Uh, we couldn't pick up all of that recyclable every two weeks and the trucks. Um, so we'd either have to add a bigger truck or another truck, uh, for the capacity for the routes. I'm just thinking, I mean, I. I mean, they're all good questions, but, uh.
Can, so this is something we're obviously gonna have to do right now to mitigate the issue. I'd like to see that if we could get that broken down for us. What, would it, without the back of the napkin cost? Can we get that brought to us so we can see what it may save us or what it might not save? Maybe it's not gonna help, but I sure would like to see those numbers.
The, uh, so, uh, so I just want to clarify. If we, how much it would cost if we didn't, if we stopped recycling?
Right, what it would cost us to take it all to landfill, just to give us all an idea of what it.
And who knows, the citizens of Lee Jackson may say, no, we absolutely want recycling, we'll pay for it. I mean.
But they need to see the options too.
Okay.
All right, so we still have this, uh, item four, which is authorize the city manager to execute contract. So, any other questions on this item? Any comment from audience? All right, need to see if we, I need a motion on this, item fourteen.
Move for approval?
Got a motion to approve. Need a second to move forward.
I'll second that.
Have a second.
I mean, we have to do this no matter what for this year, right?
For right now.
It gives us breathing, it gives us breathe, it gives us breathing room till October one and stuff. Because we get kicked out June first. So, uh, if we don't make this move, then we're stop, we're stopping recycling in fourteen days.
So you had mentioned before the city of Clute may be interested in, in participating with us on this. So if we do with the Werner contract, is there an opportunity for city of Clute to help us with this cost?
No, they will piggyback on with us and pay for their delivery, uh, and stuff. But not for the rental of the building. Their, their recycling amount is so miniscule, it wouldn't help us and stuff. But they're gonna pay their proportion. So if they have to have, you know, five more dumpsters or ten more dumpsters, you know, to all their, they'll pay for their, their shipping costs. We were not asking them for the five thousand dollars for the lease, uh, for the premise lease.
But they will benefit from it though.
They will benefit from it. But there are, the, they're discussing the same thing as well, contemplating of, as Mr. Blanchard, uh, said, you know, do they continue on with it? So they're, they're looking at their numbers.
For the October, and the time period October, it'd be nice if we could, uh, neighborly share some of that, uh, cost. But they are gaining, you know, they will be reaping the benefits. Cause we, we didn't participate and provide for the rental of the building, then they wouldn't be able to take that trash there.
I can ask.
I mean, just ask them, they can say no.
Right.
Just, I don't, we would help them out if we, if they were in the same predicament, so maybe they'll reciprocate.
Okay, we will ask.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? On our favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? All right, move to item fifteen, update on new buildings, uh, businesses coming to the city, David.
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, welcome, Mr. Blanchard. And congratulations on your reelection, Mr. Mayor. Um, we'd like to note that you, for the past two weeks, have not gotten any new applications for businesses. And we have heard some stuff through the greenland, but we're not, uh, ready to necessarily talk about that because you have not gotten official applications for that. We would like to note though, that, um, between the time that this document is prepared for the council packet and today, we have issues with the occupancy for coastal cages. So if you'd like to swing on, I'd be happy to, uh, take your Patriots over there.
Without music then.
I don't know if I would've said it that way, but that's okay.
If, if you'd like to go hit a, hit a baseball or, or, or swing a golf club, it'd be very welcome to have your presence. Um, everything else is, is well under construction. Uh, we don't have any long pending, uh, plans, uh, that we're, we're still leaving on items except for perhaps Grazis, but we're working with the, uh, new owner on that one, um, to give them, uh, expedition access.
Since I have to make a phone call tomorrow with the Clute city manager, can you tell me when Taco Bueno is going to open? He wants to know.
It's interesting, cause there's a gentleman who, who, lots of cars there tonight, there's a gentleman. I watched him, uh, as I was signaling the light, uh, get out of his car, walk up to the door. He was turned away by staff, so I'm assuming they're in their training right now. I would anticipate, uh, in the next couple of days, they should be serving the Patriots.
But they're cleared by us?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
So they negotiate with us on the spending on the thing, we'll have it open by two weeks.
I imagine.
Pardon.
Any other questions, comments or concerns?
Nope, all right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, my test of debris burning.
Debris burning. Um, Milford, can you bring up that folder? I'm flying blind here because I cannot see. No. Anyway, no, you can, you can show it. The rest of them can see it, I just can't see it. Um, I think what's on the screen is our debris site, uh, burning site at the, in, uh, Freeport. Um, I'll let, Sabrina, can you see that? Can you explain what I'm looking at?
Bunch of ash.
This is the, how, this is a little ash pile. When you see this burn right here, this is the outline that we have made for said burn pile. Um, fire department from, uh, Freeport has been on site every day to watch this. We are actually making pretty good progress, except for today, we had some issues with mechanical issues. So we did not burn today, but we have been burning, I think we started last Wednesday, Thursday, Friday and Saturday. And we're doing well there. Um, you might ask why we don't have multiple burn piles? Well, that's because the fire department has requested that we just have the one big burn pile and keep it going like this. So, uh, the process is working pretty good. You see there's some piles here, uh, Siri comes in, they dump, Bob then pushes it all up here. Fire department takes care of it, starts to burn. Um, Siri's is doing very well. They've had a couple of mechanical issues, but that's not really slowed them down. Uh, first day out, they got about, uh, twenty-five trucks and they're bringing their hundred, a hundred and thirty cubic yard trucks. And, uh, you'll see those double trailers going through there. So I'm conservatively estimating around a hundred cubic yards has been being hauled. So we've got about twenty thousand cubic yards, they should be done, you know, knocking it up quick. It will take us much longer to complete this burn. Okay, don't, don't get confused when I say that, hey, Siri's is only gonna be here for a few weeks. It'll take us much longer to complete this burn. And then once we complete the burn, we'll have to have it completely cooled. We'll test it, Waste Management will come on site. They'll make sure that the ashes, what they will accept. And then they'll, we'll go ahead and we'll haul on that to Waste Management. Um, we are, what is the best off the top of my head, the end of July?
Yeah, it's like, uh, it's the end, it's like the end of July for our permit, so it looks good.
We should be, we should be getting that, we should have admission with that. Uh, Siri's also has brought in this week their excavator now, so they will be moving even faster, uh, with hauling debris out of here. Because before, you know, you know, are you aware what a knuckle boom truck is? At the D R come down, took right into the truck. Now they have an excavator, it'll load these trucks faster than just a little knuckle boom. They have some, they needed to get a little space to be able to move everything in there. That's why it took them about half a week before they brought the excavator in. Uh, but they're in that process right now. So I haven't had any, um, complaints from anybody. We've been in touch with, uh, Freeport, cause they are going down through that, using that as a truck route. They're, Freeport's acceptable with that, they don't have a problem. Uh, and I go out every day and check with them, either myself or Brian Seibody, who's out of the office this week. But, uh, we all go out at least once a day and take a look at it and haven't had any safety concerns or any problems that are going on. The only problems have been mechanical, um, with the dozer. But the rental company has been, uh, very good about getting out there and trying to get that up worse.
You have any questions of Sabrina? She's the burning expert right now.
All right, thank you. All right, construction updates.
This, uh, this report does not have the information that the mayor recommended or suggested that we do concerning timelines. Uh, we are working towards that end. As a matter of fact, I have a rough, uh, draft of the, uh, of those same projects now, but I wasn't able to get them by, by meeting time. But in the, in the future, we will try to get a little bit, bit closer so that you can understand how the timeline is proceeding as far as what we're getting to what we originally intended or not. So it's just a matter of trying to get it all updated, going back to the engineers, if there's any design timeline, which I don't have the control over, but they can give me a better guess of when they will be finishing those projects. So that we can then put them in the queue for construction and, uh, and getting in construction. So they'll be coming to you. Uh, as far as the projects right now, and I don't even know, uh, I don't know whether, uh, Robin is, Robin? Are, are you gonna be reporting your side of the things or?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Good, okay, so I'll just stick to ours. And, uh, ours, of course, is a downtown project. Uh, I am a little bit disappointed, uh, I have not seen what I consider, uh, the productivity on the concrete. I was originally somewhat, uh, you know, impressed by the way they were approaching this thing. They are pushing it the proper way, but productivity has sort of slowed down. And, uh, I don't know whether they have, uh, they don't have the, uh, the people. I mean, it is a complicated concrete, uh, pavement, uh, scheme. It's not just run of mail, put two doors on either side and start going. This got, this one has a lot of cutouts, a lot of, uh, parking, a lot of, uh, 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 the, uh, street state type of, uh, cutouts for the pavement. So, uh, we are proceeding with that thing. Most of the water and most of the sewer now is being, uh, put in, so that shouldn't be any problem. They were putting, they were putting in some of the, uh. Some of the, uh, well, good. Uh, they're putting some of the, uh, uh, water meters, uh, water meter connections. Uh, the drainage itself though, uh, is right now at a lull, it's, uh, at a, uh, standstill. They are low on the water line at Circle Way at the very end, close to Oak Drive, primarily so that it can make, uh, room for the drainage pipe that goes through there. Right now, there's a conflict between the water line. It was one of those unexpected surprises that we've been getting on all these underground. Uh, so, uh, they are, you know, trying to make clearance for that drainage pipe. We have another one on the opposite side of North Parking Place, going down towards, uh, Gerald Shank's, uh, office building there. And we also have a conflict with the water line that wasn't, uh, picked up during the, uh, during the surveying, which is difficult. Uh, so that in itself is also putting a little bit of quietus to the actual drainage, uh, uh, project. So, uh, given that condition, uh, the, uh, the, uh, we're, we're trying to move the people across there and, you know, trying to keep on moving with the pavement. They will be, I'm sure that they're by the ends of, by the end of the week, they're gonna be pouring, uh, different, uh, a small section there, uh, right at the local. They were finishing up on the, uh, uh, they were finishing up on the forming. They were gonna be starting laying steel tomorrow. So hopefully by sometime this week, they will be finishing that portion of concrete. Uh, on the other projects that we, on the canopy area, you are aware what, uh, the update that, uh, that Megan gave you? Uh, they ran out of the, uh, sheet metal, the green sheet metal, and that put another stop to the progress. You know, we don't know when that thing, when that sheet metal is gonna arrive. It's just a matter of supply problems, like everything else. Uh, but that is at the very, you know, at the very cusp of, uh, being completed so that we can just move on the tapping of that particular, uh, roof line, of that particular canopy line. The, uh, the, uh, project that we have on the, uh, I lost my train of thought right now. Uh, we have, on the projects that we have online, uh, or on the queue is, and I was trying to hurry it up today. The, the, uh, project on the Chai Pond is one that we had a, uh, team's meeting with what amounts to be the HDPE, uh, alliance, primarily promoters of this particular product. And they set us with a contract company, a large pipeline, HDPE pro, uh, contractor that, uh, talked with us, uh, discussed the conditions that, uh, that this particular project is gonna demand. And they were supposed to be giving, coming back at me, giving them, giving us their recommendations of what it is that needs to be done in that particular project and also a cost, uh, hope, a, a cost to do this particular project. Uh, Mr. Munda was, uh, involved in that conversation, or at least he's aware of that conversation. And, but I have not heard from him. I sent him an email today trying to see where they stood on that, uh, so that we can at least be ready for the budget as it proceeds and to see whether there's gonna be enough money in there to, to be able to do this project that's been just languishing out there. Uh, the, uh, I think that that's probably the extent of the, of our projects. If you have any questions on any particular ones that you, that, um, right now I'm not remembering, let me know.
All right, any questions for Sal? If not, uh, Megan, you got an update on the museum, in the library and stuff?
The library is done. Um, stayed on budget, stayed on time, uh, we're very. The library is done, um, stayed on budget, stayed on time, uh, we're very happy. The, per their request, we are going to do, um, an unveiling type of ceremony on May thirty-first from four to five P M. Uh, council obviously is invited, it's not necessarily open to the public, the library doesn't want to open to them until the next day on June first.
You have to take your shoes off too?
Nope. The flooring is sturdy, you will be okay. Um, if you cannot make it on the thirty-first, but you would like to see the flooring before it opens, I'm happy to give a private tour, they're open every day, so I can even meet you out there on a Saturday. Um, but yeah, so they, their current plan is to be reopened June first, but everything is all done in there, it looks great.
Okay.
And then, next meeting, uh, the animal shelter is at ninety percent design completion, so, um, our architects will be here to give a presentation to y'all, um, just showing where we're at design-wise. Um, a couple of us went and picked out furniture and fixtures and all of that up in San Antonio, so I think it's gonna be beautiful and hopefully on time and on budget as well, we'll try, and.
What is the expected date of completion on?
The expected date of completion currently is July of twenty twenty-three. Um, I anticipate it will be about two months after that, so my thought is probably by October first of twenty twenty-three, so next fiscal year, we will see it open. So, that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay.
And then Jonathan is here for Robin.
Okay, Jonathan?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, for our roof replacement, Jacob is still waiting on the two remaining smaller standing seam roofs. Um, that, that metal roofing is looking like four to six weeks out, um, so we're still just waiting on that supplies. And then, on our skate park, um, electricians have been prepping for the lighting around and, uh, SPA has been working on the future concrete work, um, they've been putting up all the wood and everything around there, so everything's going, going well.
I got one quick question, I mean, there was a tree down on the trailer.
In McLean?
Yes.
Yes, uh, Bryce and the guys have been working on that.
So, is it clear yet or no?
I have not heard that it's actually cleared yet, but they do know and they are working on it.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Yep. All right, we'll move on to items of community interest, uh, JB?
Wednesday we have BCCA, we will be hosting it. I guess here at the civic center. And also, David, uh, I think we spoke maybe three, four weeks ago, one thirty-two Tulip bought a boat in the street. Uh, it's still there and one thirty-three is complaining they having problems backing out. What is the results on that conversation?
Excuse me? I have one thirty-two Tulip, uh, uh, street parking is typically handled by the police, but I'll drive through there after, after we're done here today and I'll get with, uh, Chief Anderson about that.
I thought, I thought that's what we was gonna do last, last time we.
Okay. Uh, yeah, then, uh, obviously, it hasn't, it has not happened and we'll, we'll take care of that, Councilmember Baker.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? JB?
That'll be it.
Okay, Ron?
Uh, two quick things, early voting is going on, it's the sixteenth through the twentieth, election day is actually May twenty-fourth, so this is the end of our, um, runoff election, uh, and I know this week it's at seven A M. to seven P M. our times. Uh, the other thing is Saturday, the Texas Gulf Bank and Heathcliff Jackson Beautiful Committee are hosting, uh, a shred day over at McLean Park, uh, eight A M. till eleven thirty or until the trucks are full. So, you guys bring your papers and come see us sweat, we'll load them out for you.
Yeah, there's a five bag limit.
Five, five box.
Five, five garbage bag full, yeah. Okay, Anay?
Oh, yeah, uh, they're also taking eyeglasses and, um, cell phones.
Yep.
And Christmas lights.
Okay, Vanay?
I don't have anything, sir.
Okay, Chase?
No, sir.
All right, well, they've, everybody else has hit on the ones that I had, and so, I'll go to Modesto. Anything from staff?
Hmm, I don't know, I don't have anything else, and I miss anything, guys? Nope, I think we've covered everything, Mayor.
All right, we're adjourned, thank you.